And welcome, everybody, to the July 7 Village of Woodbury planning meeting. For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, my Pledge of Allegiance, testify on the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good to see everybody back in person, see everybody smiling faces, though I do miss everybody's clocks and dogs and backgrounds and all the other fun things that come with the virtual meetings. All right, has the board had a chance to read the May 19 minutes as submitted?
Yes.
Okay. I'll offer a motion to accept them as submitted.
I second it.
Second. First, second, third, fourth. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, yes. All right, first item on the regular agenda tonight, Village of Woodbury, two lot subdivision, scheduled public hearing date for proposed two lot subdivision of property located at 15 Penny Lane in Highland Mills. Said property is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 219-5-21-2. All right. Rick, probably not next meeting or the meeting after? For the next meeting or the meeting after for the Village of Woodbury, for the two lot?
It's up to you. Either way.
Okay. So, then, 21st. 21st, okay. I'll offer a motion to schedule the public hearing for the 21st?
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda. We're already at the microphone issues.
I think that the planning board should assume lead agency this evening for this project, and because it's a subdivision, you actually have to complete seeker before conducting the public hearing, which is fine. So if you assume lead agency tonight, we can prepare the EAF Part II. You can review that before the opening of the public hearing, make your determination of significance, then hold open the public hearing, open the public hearing.
Okay. I'll offer a motion to declare this board lead agency for the Village of Woodbury Two Lot Subdivision. Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I don't have you, I've got to bring your notes with me tonight. Nothing else on that, right, Rick?
Correct.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Feldman, Southfield Falls, ARB. It's listed as a public hearing, but the public hearing has already been opened and closed. So this is a review of proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located 77 Southfields Falls and is known in the Village of Woodbury's Tax Map as Section 255, Block 4, Lot 2. Does anybody hear from the applicant for that application? Once, twice? I know who you guys, you guys are for, so. All right, we'll come back to that, then. Next item on the agenda, Woodbury Villas, review and discuss proposed site plan amendment for the relocation of the community building and parking lot within the Woodbury Villas. Said property is located at 4 Central Valley Line and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 254, Block 4, Lot 2.
Chris, good to be here. Good to be here as well. Glad to be back in person in front of the floor. But I'm happy to be in front of this floor. So, this is the outgrowth of your wanting to have a community center accelerated, and so my client went back, looked at the design, came up with some changes to that design, which we think are improvements. They need a variety of leads up to more of this information with you. I think you have the plans. And basically, when they looked at the community center itself, they thought that given the number of people that were in the community, that the size of the meeting room was too small, and so they looked to the large meeting room, which is why the building is a bit larger in order to accommodate more people. They also took a closer look at the way that the land was situated, and they came up with a reconfiguration of it, but still keeping all the same amendments that they saw, same basketball court, tennis court, and everything. So there really isn't too much to say about it substantively, because it's just a physical change in the location of the facilities and enlargement of the building, but everything that was there for as an amendment is still there. So there were a number of comments that came in from the engineering or the planning staff. Those proposed are technical in nature. They are items that we were asked not to address tonight, but hold off until we got some comments from the board. So, yeah, our engineer is not here tonight, but obviously, we will address all those comments that are there. I can get some of the high points for you. There was a request for landscaping and design. We will put landscaping in. There was a question about whether or not the ingress and egress is two ways. Both ways go, one way in and one way out, which makes sense. There are, there were requests for data regarding drainage and riprap and retaining walls. I'll show you all of that, it's okay. We'll have calculations and information for you to show that all of that is being reviewed properly. There was a question, bulk table, bulk table, they don't have plans. And so, so most of the comments that came in were technical in nature, and we'll have our engineer respond to those. So what we're hoping for, I know this is pretty poor, but we're hoping for, and we were scheduled this and we're working less over the summer before, we were hoping that because of the highly technical nature of comments that are here, and because we would like to get a show of the ground before the winter, that's really where we're coming from, is we know that it'd be more of a long list to move on this, so if you want to move, we would hope that you could set this for a public hearing as soon as we can.
Thank you. Let's go. Look, I was used to looking for a box, now I gotta look for a person.
Well, it should be good, you only have to look one way, right?
Yeah.
I won't repeat all of what Mr. Barshov just said, because a lot of it, you know, as he advised, our memo is technical in nature. One thing that wasn't brought up was whether or not part of this improvement was brought on by the placement of the fill for the sewer line improvements, which would have resulted in piles being required for placement of the building.
I'll find out about that. I don't need to answer that as well.
Okay, I think there may be some correspondence on that, but if that's, you know, either way, whether or not this is approved as a change, or we're relying on the original plans, we'll want to have the engineer certify that, you know, the building will be structurally sound based on the geotechnical issues encountered. So as Steve said, all the features that remain as part of the original approval are there, except for they're rearranged. There is one new feature, that's the pool house. You'll know on the plans, the pool has been separated from the main clubhouse building, so there is a pool house now to kind of serve, I guess, that facility. We've recommended that there be some pedestrian passage between the two facilities, also confirmation of pedestrian walkways to the main clubhouse from the courts. I guess.
Are those rules yet?
Sure, appreciate that. Another thing that was raised was that the building will be larger. I didn't see, I'm not sure I saw that on the plans, the dimensions, but we'd like to see that, and the size and how much larger it actually is going to be. The bulk table was already mentioned. The plan shows that there, or says that there are 53 parking spaces, but 51 are shown. 51 spaces were part of the original approval, but if the building is intended to be larger to, you know, accommodate more occupants, then that may need to be revisited. Minor adjustments to the access drives, we've recommended water and sewer demand calculation should be provided, and we'd want to see that that, that the revised design doesn't impact the anticipated usage. The water and sewer utility connections to the main should be shown on the plans. There were a lot of questions about the easement area shown on the plans, and whether or not they need to be amended or abandoned.
The easement was designed from the original configuration of the building, but I think they, we'll get around to that on this, because the HOA is the owner representative of the community, and we need any of these things, because it's all their own. If we need to show easements, we will, but I think they merge back to the title anyway, but regardless, if we do need little little renovations, those easements, some of them are associated with.
Sure, and some of them are associated with the utilities, though, as well, and the drainage, so all of that needs to be rectified, and our memo suggests that you consult with Rick on the procedures for amendment or abandonment, and what needs to be done for that to transpire. We talked about the riprap. All of the changes to drainage need to be confirmed for compliance with the approved SWIP. We did note that there's only one catch basin shown in the parking area, where five were previously shown, so we questioned whether or not the inlet has the capacity to handle all of that flow, so we'll look for that information. We talked about landscaping and lighting plans should be submitted, ADA compliance, confirmation for handicap accessibility, and a refuse collection area. So, those were our comments, unless anybody has any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
Does anybody from the board have questions for Natalie?
And by the way, there are only 51, 53 parking spaces. It was an error. I think it was the number is 51 spaces, and yes, we'll go back and take a look and see whether it can be discussed.
Thank you.
Natalie, do you know what was the size of the original building supposed to be?
I don't know offhand, but once we get the dimensions of the new one, we'll be able to compare it to the old.
We're gonna get you both.
Okay.
For that, because we can work on.
Okay, thank you.
It looked very similar, actually, in footprint on the recent plans that were received, so I'm not sure where the change is.
Anybody else from the board have questions for Natalie?
I have one on George Manetti. The December 2nd amended refacing, was it, I know it's stated in the community building?
Yes.
But didn't we say something about the other entities as well? Like, go ahead, ask.
Yes, so that approval actually tied the clubhouse, the gatehouses, and also the adult recreation center to the number of building permits that could be issued, and it was based on, I think the thresholds were foundations being installed, substantial, and then final completion, and then once those were completed, the applicant would get six, and then 10, and then 16, and then another 10 building permits that they could be issued. So, whether or not, I mean, I think the planning board's intention at that time was to make sure the improvements were done, not necessarily an accelerated schedule as the applicant suggests, but like I said, they're tied to the number of building permits that can be issued, based on the progress of those improvements.
Okay, is the word that I'm looking for is, did we say the amenities, any of them had an operation before we issued building?
There were a certain number that could be issued upon plan signing, a certain number that could be issued, once the performance bond was submitted. The next threshold was that the clubhouse foundations were installed, then they could get a certain number of building permits after that. The next was substantial completion, which was clearly defined, actually, and then final completion was the final, I think it was remaining 10 building permits. Not sure if that answers your question. Okay.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Yeah, but I think she would know. On the same, same thing that Rich was talking about, was the performance bond posted?
We did receive the bond. We're working back and forth with some language. Vashiva did submit it to me, and we're almost there. We've submitted an estimate, they've complied with that estimate, it's just the language of the document itself.
So the bond was issued and it's in effect.
I'm sorry, can you hear?
The bond is issued and it's in effect.
Okay.
So what we're, I think that there was some language that you wanted to put in or had put there, and so we'll just wait on your engineer.
Okay.
Any other questions? Natalie? Jonathan?
Going third, there aren't too many comments left that weren't already covered from my memo, but I'll just pick up some of the things that haven't been mentioned yet. The landscaping plan for WP3 showed street trees along this portion of the street that the recreation center fronted, so when you do the landscaping plan, you should make sure that it matches the, what was approved in this area, unless, of course, you do want to change it, then we have to sort of explain the differences. And there's a sidewalk that went along the road across the street from the recreation center, so there'll need to be a crosswalk that comes over, you know, so people, I assume a lot of people will ride bikes, or children will be pushed in strollers, whatever, to come down sidewalks to get to the, to the center. So there needs to be a way for them to connect from across the street from that sidewalk. Also, the courts and some of the facilities are at different levels, some of them are like 10 feet different, so besides just paths, there may need to be some stairs or even ramps considered, so that was one thing. No one has mentioned that, I had found that on the new design, there are wetlands at the back of the site, and on the old drawings, it seemed like wetlands in that configuration were actually on the other side of the property line, beyond the property line, and in the new drawing there, on the subject property, so I just wanted to figure out what, what happened there. Either they weren't flagged properly in the original, or original plan set, or perhaps the wetlands have changed. I'm not sure, maybe with, with filling and grading, but that should be explained. Also, the parking lot will need parking islands. Don't forget, when you figure out how many parking spaces you need and do the landscaping, that you can't just have all entirely pavement, there need to be some landscaped islands in the parking lot. I believe everything else has been pretty much covered. The project will require architectural review and rich preservation, so of course, we'll need elevations of the building, proposed materials, floor plan, and enough to make those decisions in the future, and. Well, in this case, the planning board is the ARB, it's really the same. You get it concurrently. They have, they have hats in the drawers that they pull out. So, I think that, 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 that pretty much covers it.
Any questions for Jonathan?
I did have a question. Jonathan, and this might sound a little stupid, but on page two of your memo?
Yes.
On the 2007 layout, I looked at that, and I looked at the map that they gave us. Where was the recreation building supposed to be? I didn't see it on either of those maps.
It, it is pretty sketchy sketch from bracket 2007, but I believe it was next to the pool.
The outline.
It's the outline of the building is next to the pool, and, you know, and one of my comments is, the pool doesn't have to be next to the clubhouse, but if you've visited clubhouses, typically the pool is near the clubhouse, so that if you have to go to the bathroom, or you have to, or you want to get a drink at the bar, or whatever you're doing at the clubhouse, you can just sort of get out of the pool area, right into the clubhouse. In this case, they've moved the building to the other side of the parking lot, and then put in the pool house instead. And I suppose the most important thing for the planning board to do tonight is, is to give the applicant some sort of tentative blessing, that you're okay with the new design and layout, so they can proceed to do all these technical improvements to their submission. I think that's probably the, the best step to take tonight, and then that way they don't design all this stuff, and then we discuss how we really wanted to have a different configuration of the site later.
Well, where was it supposed to go? Between the parking lot and the pool, in that little space there, between the parking lot and the pool?
Yeah, if you look at the 2007 sketch.
Yeah.
It, there's, sort of looks like two eyeballs and a black ball.
Mm-hmm.
The, the bottom ball was the, the waiting pool. The middle ball of the snowman was the totlot playground.
Right.
And then the black part was another, I think, play area. Then to the right, there's a thing that looked like a, a square with a curve on the bottom, that's the outline of the pool.
Right.
Then behind that was this sort of trellis, sun shade for the lounge chairs, I suppose. And then everything above that, until you got to the parking lot, was the rec building.
Wow, that seemed like such a small space compared to the.
Yeah, well, they, and they've made the rec building bigger, and it is unclear how big the initial design was, and how much bigger the new one is. It's somewhat bigger, but we don't have before and after dimensions, and they're stating they'll be providing that. But to me, the biggest difference is how it will all function. Right now, you could walk from the clubhouse to the courts, or from the clubhouse to the pool, or see how you're, you know, be in the clubhouse and, and be near the pool, right? And then the only thing that was far was if you parked at the other end of the parking lot. Now, sort of the parking lot's in the middle, and you have to cross the parking lot to do everything.
And I think that's where the little hallway that was suggested comes in, to make sure that it's a very nice landscape, pedestrian way, be able to get between.
But it'll traverse the parking lot?
It'll traverse the entrance to parking lot, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jonathan?
No question. Jonathan, on your memo on page three, number four, you were concerned about the riprap to stabilize the steep slopes and the multiple retaining walls. Was your concern just as far as landscaping, or was there concern about erosion?
No, I mean, I, I would leave it to the engineers that the walls will function. It's certainly possible to build walls that will function perfectly well without erosion, but mostly, they're extensive, and with no landscaping, it would look really like I have a fortress almost look to it with all these walls. On the south side, there's four rows of walls at one point, so it really needs some, some landscape treatment, and they, they're stating that they're going to provide that. That's really what's my concern, was the, the, you know, how this will all look. The walls and riprap are much more extensive than the original design, which was more of a schematic and, and not really, they, they didn't do a full grading and, and really figure out exactly how many walls they would need when they did the 2007 layout.
Natalie, you had something on your memo about that.
Yes.
Concerns where this has been used before with problems with erosion?
That's right. I mean, these are areas of steep slopes, and once you start to use riprap, you have to confirm, A, that it's constructable, but B, that it's going to stay that way, once, like, as you suggested, the storms actually occur, and erosion could potentially occur as well. So I know that in other areas, similar designs with this riprap, if it's not large enough stone, it may fail, and then that could be converted to either a wall or some kind of other concrete structure, which sort of takes away from the intent of, of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, right? So we've requested, yes, that confirmation that they could be constructed, and then also stabilized, that they would remain. And then, again, this area actually was considered in the past for the grading, there were walls presented in the original design, they're showing three or four also there, so it's, it's an interesting site, and there's some constraints that they have to deal with. And, you know, we've requested more information on that at this point.
Thank you.
You're saying that that was approved in the previous site plans?
The one, the 2007.
Seven?
Plan, yep. Yeah, I'm looking at the grading plan here. The bottom of the lowest wall is 594, and the top of the highest wall is 618, so you're talking 24 feet difference.
Any other questions for Natalie or Jonathan?
Just a couple of things. One, as you all know, this project went through extensive seeker review, full environmental impact statement findings, et cetera. I think that the change in this reorientation and possible change in size of, that's being discussed for the clubhouse, is not something that's so significant that would require any additional seeker review. If the board agrees, they can go ahead and reaffirm prior seeker, that the modifications herein were within the general impacts that were studied by the prior seeker review. Secondly, with respect to the easements, Steve is correct that if an easement that was in one person's name now is on property that is in the same person's name, that easement necessarily and by operation of law is extinguished. You can't give an easement to yourself or have an easement to the same owner. What we will do is look at those easements between now and whenever this is next on an agenda, to decide which easements can be considered extinguished, and therefore don't need to be on the plans, but with respect to easements for utilities and things, there still should be some recognition of that continuing of the easements, and trying to make sure that it doesn't unnecessarily interfere with any of the structures that are being put on there, and we'll review that for those issues.
Any questions for Rick?
Well, I'm not sure if it's Rick or Mr. Barshov, but just housekeeping, because I always do this. The owner, on the form, it says the owner is Woodbury Villas, but on, according to Orange County Tax Maps, it's still saying Woodbury Complex C, LLC. Who, who is the owner of this property?
I'm not sure of show on tax information. I always understood it was Woodbury Villas, but if there's some other entities, I have that point.
Okay, yeah, I just looked this up a few days ago, and that's what it's still saying. So that has to be corrected, right, Rick?
Yes, and Steve can look on the same Orange County records. Now, those records many times are months old, so if there's been a recent transfer of the, the land from one entity to another, it wouldn't necessarily be reflected in the county records, but then Steve would have to look at whatever the recent transaction was that transferred ownership, and then make sure that it's in the proper name, and he could provide proof of the ownership.
Right, but I think, I think it went from the HOA, this particular piece, I think, went from the HOA to Woodbury Complex C, LLC. I didn't see anything different between there. Okay.
And Steve, if in fact it's not in Woodbury Villas' name, then you will need an owner's authorization from the, the corporate entity to Woodbury Villas to proceed.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hey, Rick, I have a question. Being on HOA board, maybe it's, in a typical situation, a homeowner is 100% of the community building, or calling, and it's difficult, and then it's managed by a board, is the applicant, the HOA board, or it doesn't matter in this case, I mean, it's been 10 years now since the first building was created, I think it was 2010, some people moved in, it's been 10 years, and I guess a lot of people, you know, paid money, and so I'm just questioning, who really owns the community building at this point in time? Is it the homeowner, the state away, or is it, is it the applicant?
Well, the timeframe doesn't really come into play. The, who's going to own it is based upon the HOA documents, and what they say, who owns what with respect to community utilities and facilities, rather. As I understand it, it's been represented to me, that Woodbury Villas still controls a majority of the HOA, but again, it's all going to be dependent upon the HOA documents, that's really not something for the purview of this board. It's something that's a contractual arrangement between the property owners and the HOA and owner, and it's overseen by the Attorney General's Office. But it would be, the answer to that question is all going to be in the HOA documents themselves, as to how the HOA changes with respect to seats on the HOA, how elections are done, which portions of common which portions of common space are owned by the HOA versus others. So it just has to be, um, it'll be completely determined by those HOA documents.
Yeah, it's complicated, let me process again, and we have a public hearing, have, let's say an HOA board come say, we don't know about this, or we have a document, this is something else. That's why I'm concerned.
If we have the owner's authorization for an applicant to come here to do something on that property, that's all this board has to worry about. If in fact there are HOA issues and people think that the board isn't reflective of what it should be under the HOA documents, that's a private matter between, um, the owners and the HOA.
Any other questions for the consultants or for the applicant? Okay. Um, I know you had requested a public hearing. I think we're almost there, but we're not quite there yet. Um, the, uh, with your next submission, I would do the ARB application, because that's what the board is going to have to review as well, so we can then do both public hearings at the same time. And it'll save, it'd save yourself a little bit of, uh, effort there. Um, and typically, we like to look at the ARB application. One meeting, give you any kind of feedback, so you can make any changes that this board has, and then typically, we'll schedule the public hearing after that, so that that feedback can be incorporated, and then we can have the public comment on what's, what's there. So we are working somewhere, we, we don't have any meetings that are missed, so.
I'm sorry.
It is what it is, but we will be there.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
And what, what, how can we get a timeline when you think this might be built? Would you say this should be, this should be, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the project? Yeah, I'm trying to get, you know, try to get, you know, several, uh, people to judge, and give your time on this.
Has, has anything been done on the other, on the active adult? Building?
I just really focused on this.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're good with what you need to get submitted, though, for your next?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, did, did you want to address SEAKER or wait until the next meeting?
Well, what was it?
That, I think it would be appropriate for, uh, the fact that you reaffirmed SEAKER for the review of this project.
Yes, sorry about that. I'll make a motion to reaffirm SEAKER. Seaker up.
I'll second.
Second by Tommy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, Glock Summit Properties ARB, review and discuss documents submitted for ARB review of five single-family homes located on Summit Avenue in Central Valley. Said property. Said properties under the village of Woodbury, Tax Map, Section 228, Lot 9, Lots 1 dot 22, 1 dot 22, 4 dot 21, 4 dot 241, 4 dot 243. Okay.
The PD man is our accountant, Jonathan. Okay, we have a full file, a lot, and I have my own show up, so. Uh, we, we, uh, 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 so you do your best, is what you're trying to say?
That's right. Do you want to select some comments on the, uh, 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 yes, within the limits of disturbance, though. So, so I need two powers for that?
We were given that.
I think we, I think we have that.
This, with the?
Yeah, did it?
Um, no.
I'm impressed.
So, the, uh, what we have was provide.
Did we get this today?
I don't think I got that. I'm gonna check my mail.
Maybe it wasn't. Oh, no, it has to.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. This is, 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 this[1144.12]
The view corridor, just based on there the two homes that are situated around lot three, which is the home that is clearly visible, right? So, once these sites begin to be or are cleared even further, there is a potential for visibility. So, when you're considering colors and materials, you know, you'll want to hone in on those two homes. And then, another thing that we've brought up previously is the exposure of the rear face towards the view corridor. So, you'll actually see up to three levels on each of these homes, you know, from the view corridor. So, something like that, your criteria, which I know, I think we've all kind of highlighted some of them in your memos, but, you know, the building design and where they're located on the lots and, you know, things like that can mitigate those impacts. Although, I will say that previously in the initial review of the subdivision, some of this was was considered, right, with the conservation easement areas. You know, one of the resolution conditions is that the home shouldn't be shifted in five feet in any direction, and that's because these visibility concerns were were considered. Obviously, changes to the site have identified that, you know, more areas are visible than others. That was one thing I wanted to bring up. Another criteria for your ridge preservation is the preservation is the preservation of trees and the conservation easement areas. So, the prior subdivision had identified those boundaries. It's certainly to your discretion to consider whether or not they should be expanded, or if if the areas that have been preserved or are going to be preserved in perpetuity are sufficient. Lot four, we would recommend you consider extending that easement area to the northern part of the property that extends past where Oak Concourse, the easement for Oak Concourse is, and that's where the home is actually going to be constructed. So, if you're looking at that lot, the septic field is to the south and then the home is opposite that right of way. So, that area is not surrounded by an easement, a conservation easement, but it does have disturbance limits shown on the plan. So, our suggestion would be to consider whether or not those disturbance limits would make a good limit for an easement area. Otherwise, another alternative, and Rick can opine whether or not I'm off base, is if just strict adherence to those disturbance limits are is a satisfactory alternative. Although, I think the what you lose there is the perpetuity, right, of it. So, that's my my question and comment. We've recommended a rear elevation for the home on lot one. Those were received for other lots, but not that one. Jonathan provided a table of the size of the homes in comparison to each other and the existing homes in the area, so the size of the homes you could consider. And I think we had done something similar previously based on living area, and I think our memo noted that it was the proposed homes are 20 to 49% larger than what's existing to the smallest and largest home that's that's already in the subdivision. So, that's something to consider. Although, I do, again, sorry, you guys have considered this on a couple of occasions and made suggestions to the applicant, and I think those those comments are relevant and really should those materials need to be provided to kind of move this along. We've also requested that confirmation that the retaining walls can be constructed as shown and within the disturbance limits since they're shown right up against the limit area. Sometimes you have to excavate behind the retaining wall, so, you know, we want them to be shown correctly so that those limits could be maintained. There were some some clarifications on where the stormwater management system was located on lot nine and the disturbance limits around the septic system on lot four. And then, one other thing that I wanted to discuss, and it wasn't listed in our memorandum, were compliance with the prior resolution conditions. So, I apologize that it wasn't in our memo, but I had a chance to to look into that a little bit more thoroughly. I know Rick is investigating some of the easement and deed restriction issues, but we did review some of the more engineering-related concerns associated with the drainage, the drainage improvements, and the speedies permit condition, number 16. So, I'll talk about those specifically and relatively. Condition number 11 of that approval, and I can, if it's acceptable to the board, I can kind of send some of these comments to the applicant so that they they know that this needs to be addressed or considered. Number 11 is related to drainage improvements along Summit Avenue. There is a swell that's in place per the plans, and driveway culverts will be constructed as part of this this application. But there is a flared end section that borders the southern property line of lot eight, which is developed. It's also an RCP culvert pipe that runs from the road to the flared end, and that's where the ultimate point of discharge for that should be. We did an inspection of the area and found, we couldn't identify where that was. So, that either needs to be constructed as part of this plan, or, you know, located and maintained so that we can confirm compliance with that condition. Number 12 was related to the drainage along Oak Concourse. We noticed that there were portions of an asphalt swell where a concrete swell was supposed to be located, and in this case, we're not really necessarily concerned about the material, but it we were, it's overgrown, you know, it's filled with silt, so it needs to be cleaned out so we can identify whether or not the extent of that swell, the concrete swell or asphalt swell, is installed. There's also supposed to be a grass swell along the shorter leg on Oak Concourse, and that doesn't seem to be present, so that should be constructed for the plans. The next condition was 16, which required a speedies permit to the extent that one's required by the DEC. We'd like to see whether, like the documents describing, whether or not that permit was applied for and issued. It looks like, based on the current regulations, there should have been one, so just cover, the applicant should provide provide proof of that coverage. Two of the conditions we weren't able to confirm were the status of the maintenance bond requirement for Oak Concourse, which is condition 18, and parkland fees being paid, which was condition 20. And I think that it's possible that these two were long resolved and and just no longer pertinent, but we'll work on that further. And then, the last thing I wanted to note for the applicant's benefit is, within the approved resolution, it references the engineer's memo from that time, and that requires, and actually, it's on the plan itself, that as-built plans of the stormwater maintenance facilities for each lot be provided, and then that should be submitted to the building department so that they have that for any future homeowners to refer to. And that's all I have. As-built drawings of the stormwater ma-
Drawings of the stormwater-
Yeah, there's individual, some of the infiltration systems on each lot that were proposed, so the as-builts of those need to be submitted. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Natalie?
Well, I'm not-
Yes.
Okay, I I have gone up there several times, and I'm having a hard time, like, okay, on this context map, where lot one is, there's supposed to be a vacant lot beside that. Yeah, if you want to come here, I'll show you what I mean. Okay, so in the context map, this is lot one. This is the house that's the original house that's all covered with the-
Tyvek.
Tyvek, right?
Beautiful.
Okay, and then, on this piece on the other side of the driveway is that garage thing or that bar?
There's a barn there, right.
Okay, so there's supposed to be a vacant lot, and then-
There's a house on this. There's a house on that.
Okay, that's what I'm trying-
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I was losing, why is it-
We're not showing on this, we're only showing our lots.
Okay.
Oh, you see the so landscaping's plan, and they just showed-
Okay, well, because that house was there, that's why I thought-
Yeah.
Okay, so then-
They didn't show it.
Okay. Because I was, I was getting really confused as to, there's not enough space there for-
There's a house there with a garage and a lot-
So, that's going on the other, this is going on the other side-
Right, right, the beige colonial.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, remember when we were up there?
Yeah.
So, there's, there's the beige colonial.
Correct.
So, lot one is on that side.
Lot one's on that side.
Okay, all right, got it. I'm not confused anymore.
Any other questions for Natalie? No? Jonathan?
The chairman of the-
Sure.
He, he, uh-
Yeah, yeah.
He reported, he asked you about-
There's no questions.
Uh, remove the third to three trees in all five lots. And, and, so, so they recommend that we look back at the two trees, not the same size as ours, but, uh, we, but, I had a conversation with the owner earlier, and, and he said, you know, we mitigate, uh, the height of lot four or lot nine, we plan so we can plant all the type of trees by six, um, of those lots in the graveyard.
I think it certainly helps, right, replacement of plantings that are removed. As far as the ridge preservation corridor, it would be appropriate to consider where those are placed, and if that's something that you want to propose, it should just be identified on a plan so that the board can consider it at their next meeting.
Uh, who's the mayor?
Also, with respect to that, whenever you're dealing with the ridge preservation, and if these trees are related to mitigating the impact from the corridor, then those those trees that are being planted should also be part of an easement that needs to be, or deed restriction, that needs to be in there in order to protect the fact that those trees, for future owners, they know that they have to keep those trees there because that is the purpose of why this was approved, because of the mitigation from the view corridor.
Sure.
Paul, start.
I'm, I appreciate now that your landscaping is involved in this in this phase because the landscaping plans have taken a big leap forward now that you've gotten a landscape architect involved. Our memorandum, really, the big problem that we had had is you showed limits of disturbance with lots of trees in them, and it wasn't entirely clear which ones were going to be cut, which ones were going to be preserved. The plans that were revised on July the 2nd that you put on the table tonight appear to largely, you know, begin to address that, and it's it's now becoming clearer which trees are to be protected and which are to be taken out, and you're showing tree protection around them, temporary fencing around the trees that you're keeping so that the workers don't whack them and hurt them, and that they'll they'll survive after the construction is completed and the area is is regraded and replanted with grass and so forth. But, we do need, you know, more more time to to look at that. We appreciate the species picked out, none of them are on any invasive species lists. We had noted that you were just putting plants in the front of the houses, and nothing was proposed for any of the side areas, but I believe that on this new plan, you have started to address that, and and will comment on it when we have time to review it thoroughly. And, uh, once again, I guess if the if the board is satisfied on the sizes and placement of the homes, maybe that could be settled tonight, and then the applicant could refine these drawings and take care of the fixing the details that Natalie's enumerated on drainage, set up the documents to preserve the areas outside the limited limits of disturbance with with deed restrictions, as the attorney has suggested, so that in perpetuity, we know these trees outside the limit of disturbance are going to stay. And, um, we did provide that that chart. It appears that some of the differences between the the adjacent homes and the proposed homes is that I, it appears that the basements may not have been included on the adjacent homes, but we still haven't had that verified. And I guess those are, those are my comments, I won't, and I try not to be repetitive with prior prior consults.
Do you have questions for Jonathan?
Jonathan, on the nearby adjacent homes, on your second part of the chart, do they include the basement or not? I think you just mentioned something about that.
Yeah, um, the, I think, if, as I recall, I'm trying to find where I mentioned that. The applicant's figures do not appear to, I I noted that the applicant's figures don't appear to include these basement areas of the surrounding homes, and then, I know, Rick, in your memo, you said, you know, that needs an answer. With that, that would certainly be helpful to know. If it doesn't include the basements, then it would really prove that these new houses are closer in size to nearby adjacent homes because you could probably add a few thousand square feet to each of the adjacent homes' figures.
Seems like the Newbury House, number four, lot four, in comparison to the adjacent house, seems to have the biggest discrepancies.
Uh, I would agree, and, you know, we've been, we've asked for a couple of memos now for the applicant to discuss and provide figures that either these figures for the adjacent homes do include, do do or do not include basements, and then add the basements in so that we're comparing apples to apples, or if those figures for the adjacent homes include the basements, then then we've got to discuss whether they are excessively dissimilar.
Do you know if those include the basements?
I would say that they just include, do not include the basements. Okay, I was up there, you know, I was up there an hour ago, and, and the house, okay, the house of 100, it looks to be about the same size as our house on lot four or lot nine, square footed lies. Okay, snap the picture on.
Is that the one with the brick and the teterlo?
It's got a little brick inside it. Hamstick, you know, it's the hamstick house.
Yeah, it's on the corner with the chickens.
Oh.
They have chickens. Well, that's great.
That's the one backs up the WP3, right?
Uh, right.
Yeah, yes, it's a group one.
That's what was just before, sorry.
Hmm?
That's one of which is before us.
That's before ZBA right now.
Got it, yeah, I know that one.
No, we haven't seen that one yet.
All right, so, the house across the street from that, you know, it's kind of a tewers town, it's quite large.
Yeah. That's, that's been there a while.
All there, right, the grounds.
All right, but we do have to give the client, the applicant, some direction about placement on the lots, at least, so they can move forward. And I know you said you had color boards.
Color boards, if you're concerned about color on lot four.
I'd like to give the applicant, if we can, some directions on that as well, so we can keep this moving.
Uh, so, color, I'm gonna, just a color like this, and a lighter, uh, we could go with this, it's a gray panel.
So, that would be the overall body of the house? Would be those-
Yeah, we could go with a darker gray and a light gray trim, or we, or we could go with darker gray and a light trim, or, I have other options. I think we might have a little lighter now.
Behind door number two.
So, is this for one?
Lots of bigger. Is this for all the lots or just one lot?
Kind of for all the lots.
You know, part of A or B is excessive similarity and excessive-
Dissimulation.
Dissimulation, so we couldn't, we also couldn't have all houses that looked cookie cutter-y, like, couldn't do a track home either, so we'd have to kind of mix the colors up there.
Yeah.
It's not four and nine though, I don't think.
There's a line that-
Four and nine are the front lots, right?
Yeah, that you gotta see.
I like that for four, three, four and nine.
These, these, this for lot six, all right, this for lot nine. Uh, I'm missing a door here, this for lot seven, and this is an option for any lot.
So, that's, I'll stay with that, the board you have there, right?
This board here.
So, let's talk about four and nine, those are the two lots that are in the front. Let's start, that are visible from the view corridor.
View corridor.
So, let's talk about colors for-
Be darker.
I would rather see them be on the darker side than-
The darker side.
Yeah.
The white side.
Yeah. Espresso, a little dark.
That's a little, little-
It's not better, I mean, we, you know, not cedar.
And what materials are these? Is this vinyl?
Vinyl, vinyl side?
Yeah, yeah, vinyl side. You ever said you would opt on those lots to do, like, to those lots four and five, or five and nine?
That's that wooden grain, right? It's that five or six inch.
Thank you, bud. Of course, I don't have any of those colors, but it'd be nice.
Right, what do you think, Rick?
The vinyl thing is-
Well, the vinyl thing, I think, is, for this subdivision, I don't think applies.
I thought for, I thought in ridge preservation-
No vinyl, we don't, I thought.
Right.
Right. Rick?
Right.
Right, okay. Now, what about a hardy plank?
It's wood, stone, or brick is what it's supposed to be, right? If, um, hardy plank-
It's a wood look.
It's certainly more of a wooden look than most things, other than wood.
And it's made out of wood.
Problem is, is there's no real ambiguity with those materials there. It it actually calls out those three-
Correct.
Those three materials. There's no looks like, feels like, tastes like it's wood, stone, or brick.
No, talking with-
No.
No.
Um, and I think that's-
Yeah.
So, it's-
So, we have to go with the wood? It's not even the same.
At least on four and nine.
Right.
One is out, right? One is out of the view corridor?
I think we think one, I think one is out because that's further back-
Right.
In the, and there's all that.
Does she feel seen one?
No.
Right, because you're going to keep the trees-
It's odd, you know, it comes uphill and then dead flat.
Yeah, I think four and nine are the concerns.
Four and nine, good.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
So, it's going to go with the wood, correct?
Yeah, it has to, there's no, it's either that or it's brick or stone.
Like, the lighter the two, that expression's dark.
And when it comes to the decks like that-
But, Tom, I think, I think these that are shown here, that those are vinyl. So, what he's now saying is that for those two, it would be wood with some kind of stain.
Stain, but silver color basis, correct?
Yeah, that would be fun.
He's not going to stain it red, like-
Yeah.
Or yellow or anything, right? You know?
Those are the stains.
These colors are all stains.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yours for the decks.
Well, if the board could select some, some range, then the applicant can go ahead and, you're going to have to identify, there's a, from the building department, you may be familiar with, there's an ARB form that requires you to identify specifically-
Colors and products.
The colors and products. So, after the planning board looks at that and makes some general choices or within a range, then you'll have to go ahead and fill that out because that will, that information will then be carried over into a resolution so that the building department can enforce it and know what it's enforcing.
I think he's leaving it up to us, he's, he's looking for us to give that.
Yeah, they've, they've submitted previously, so I think, yeah, but when they're, Natalie's answering-
Right.
It'll have to be outdated.
Oh, I got you, they just kind of go halfway with the-
Right.
Right.
That's a bad reference, we have to lie here.
So, for four and nine, what were you, what we, the color range you were thinking about for four and nine? Did you, or is you just saying?
On those, on those fours, what were your colors for four and nine?
Four and nine? Uh, what did we pick originally? These are the options, uh, this the color for nine, this was an option.
They're on both sides.
Uh, so, it was-
They're on both sides of the color.
It's like a beige, it's all buckskin, or an option, option here, or like a green.
Well, for four and nine, we're, we're talking about these stains though, right?
Yeah, that's what we're trying, we're trying to work to, if he had ideas for colors, where-
Work backwards. And lot four-
Buckskin certainly sounds natural.
Sounds very natural, buckskin, right?
Is this what it looks like? Because this was a previous one.
Is that what buckskin is?
Buckskin, that's it.
That's way too light.
Yeah. Do you think we need to be down?
Yeah. So, the state.
Sorry, we only got one.
I think we're taking somewhere that here.
I know this is, this is long, but we're trying to get you as much as we can to help move you along.
All right, though, it wasn't bad.
These are the back ones, these are the matches, the four, six, and seven. The last application in late one.
Okay, but that's four, six, and seven, so-
What did you have, do you have one of these for four?
For four?
Four, I, well, we did, can we get some?
Well, on your board, which one is up there? That's-
Nine is on the right.
That's nine on the right, right?
I think Natalie, Natalie just showed it.
Lot six is the right.
Which one for four?
That's four, yeah.
This is four, or this was the prior one, this is the one you requested.
To be darker.
Much darker.
To be darker.
It's fast, it's-
Here, here.
One in here. Here, you get too reddish.
Where are you going from?
Who chose this color?
You can't do this electronically.
I think, I think this is what it-
This is almost where it was.
It's where it is right now.
Remember it now, if you look at that picture there.
Yeah, here's lot nine.
I'm thinking.
It's on the back.
Yeah, I would say so, too.
So, first, I'm sorry.
In those, in those range?
Four.
Are you doing?
Do you have a rear or a left?
The darkness here.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I'm okay with that, too. So, for both houses, four and nine, they pick from here?
They did a more-
I have like a larger plan, so yeah, it's probably not. No, well, she, she said this is-
Four, so-
You know, that's definitely-
So, and really, it's, it's like beside each other, so.
Right, so do you do this for four and, and then, or nine, and then-
Seven.
Maybe go with the particles and the rest.
Something, I don't know.
Make a little restriction, yeah.
So, we had, just so, because you don't want the two houses that are stacked, like each other, where we can think.
Six from the back.
I would think something other, over here.
Over here on the-
These last two.
Like here?
Yeah, yeah. And then, these two.
Yeah, these two, these two rows. These two rows?
Yeah.
So, and?
Is this these four?
Either four or nine, it doesn't make a difference, right? And then, you would say down there somewhere.
Four.
I don't think you want to go any lighter than that.
No.
Any rock, anything or close to that. So, if they were picking the same color.
We're okay with that?
They were okay with that.
Okay.
And the deck color, if they're going to want-
Well, the deck is going to probably want to match the house, right?
I don't know.
Deck color would match the house?
Yes. Seems like it, oh, not in all of them, this one, it's actually a little dark, a lot lighter there.
Yeah.
Six, 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 seven.
So, I don't know.
The deck would match it.
I think it might be better. This one might be safe.
This is why, this is online meetings.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm okay with the dark.
Yeah, but this is-
A little darker, yeah.
Yeah, the darker, yeah, especially on four and nine.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So house placements we're okay with, we did call this for four and nine. Now what about the, the rest of the lots?
So are you clear on the planning board's direction for four and nine? Okay, if you could fill out the ARB sheet for those lots, does the-
Right. I was very, I was up there too, and that was my biggest concern, I'd like to see him put ribbons on. This way we can get the plan.
I thought they said they were gonna cage him, I thought they were cage him.
No, that's when they do the construction.
Those are the ones they're gonna save, I'm talking about put ribbons on the ones they're gonna remove, if they match the plans, we can take a look.
Something we said? I don't know.
I, I think he was coughing.
Oh, okay. We don't think they were yours.
Oh, no.
Maybe they're his.
Chris, the, so for four and nine?
Right.
We're gonna ask them to go ahead and submit ARB materials listing sheets for four and nine, for whatever you pointed out there, right? Okay. For clarity purposes, can four and nine be of the same color? They're not directly adjacent to one another.
They're, they're separated apart.
Yeah. Are you guys okay with?
I think the way they're separated, I'd be okay.
If that's easier for them, you know, if that's-
Well, it's just, I mean, normally it's by a preference of maybe a homeowner who's coming in and saying it, so-
So they have these two paths to pick from.
And even if they choose the two, I don't think that would be excessive similarity because of the distance.
They're further enough apart.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that too.
Yep.
All right, did you hear that? Is that for four and nine, you will submit the ARB materials listing on the two choices that you now have been given direction on from the planning board? And for four and nine, they can be either one, or both of them could be the same choice.
Okay, because, yeah.
Okay.
Because they're not on top of each other, so. So the homeowner, the potential buyer has a little bit of, yeah, they have a, a little bit of a choice there.
Yeah.
Um, what was the ribbon request for the-
For the trees that were removed?
That matched the next submitted plan that he has.
Okay. It's considered a tree survey, right, Rick?
Excuse me?
The tree survey that had the ribbons tied on it?
The ones that are gonna be removed.
I mean, a tree survey could mean lots of things, okay, but they, they do tie, tie, tie ribbons around trees that, for various purposes, either for staking out of perimeters, or for trees that need to be protected, it depends upon what you, you're looking for.
I think the board is looking to see the ones that you're gonna save, just tie the, just tie them-
The ones they're gonna remove.
Remove, is it removed? Okay.
Usually it's, it's whichever is less, right? So if you're only gonna remove a few trees, then you, you're gonna tie the ribbon around the ones you're gonna remove.
Right.
But if, if you're only gonna save a few, then you need to know which few are gonna be saved.
I think you're saving more than you're removing, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the trees that are being removed have them marked with, uh, ribbon.
Thanks, you mentioned thirty, thirty-two trees being removed?
Just, you know, flagger tape, it doesn't have to be, you know, bow and-
Yeah, it's when we look at your next plan, and we do a site visit, we can-
Okay. What else do we have to? Uh, six, seven, and nine, do we, are we gonna stay with those colors then, or the colors that he submitted? I want, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure when he, when he walks out tonight, he's-
Yeah, I thought we were okay.
He's good with that, and we're good with that, I don't want him, have him come back and-
Six and seven. Which one's that?
This one? This is, uh, seven.
Seven?
This one? Six.
Six?
And if you could resubmit, so we know the final ones, as to each one of these homes, the ARB material sheet, if they'll be listed in the resolution, and that would be easy for the building department to go ahead and, and see, all right, this is what it says here, this is, and this is where it is, okay? So regardless of what you submitted in the past, have new ones dated as to each of the homes, all right?
And also, these ones that you put on the table, once that, it's July second, distribute that to everybody, all the ones.
Well, he just submits it to the building department.
Both to the building department.
To the building department, and they'll send it all out, and we'll all get the same thing in one pile, instead of in bits and dribs and drab.
So this is a real document? This is lot one, colors, lot six, okay, lot seven.
Okay, yeah, I remember.
These houses are next to each other.
Right, but all the houses seem to have a, like a secondary color around the trim, and this one, this one, this was the one that didn't have any, you know, like that, has the lighter that has the-
We can do that, because he just asked me, the colors for all of them.
Yeah, I, I would like that.
Okay. If that's what you're asking for, then-
I listened, man.
Good answer.
It's just that all of them have, that doesn't say-
No, I got you. No, I got you, I got you.
Are you discussing lot six? Or which home, just so I know?
Lot six.
Lot six, yeah.
Lot six, you moved it.
Difference in trim, right?
Still a trim color.
Different trim color.
Countermeasure.
Yeah, so we'll go with those colors, we'll go with lot placements there. You're gonna do the resubmitment, you'll, you'll do the ribbons on the trees that are being moved, update the ARB application. Yeah, I'm just talking out loud to make sure.
On lot one, so now that I know where that is, um, is that house gonna kind of line up with the house, or is it gonna be further in front of, or further back of, do you know?
Probably gonna line up with the other.
Okay.
I was gonna just check the survey. Yeah, check it.
Because I, I see six and seven are just like a little bit, you know, oh. They're not like right across.
The other one's not shown. I'm here, but here's, here's, here's the street. It shows.
Okay, so it's kind of probably at least like that, it's not, it's not dramatic.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else we need, need or want, or, or gonna requests from the applicant?
Do you want to consider that conservation easement area on lot four at the northern, on the northern part of the parcel? I know, I guess-
That's back by the septic, you said, right?
The existing conservation easement area is by the septic, but if you considered extending it to where the home is gonna be constructed, um, you know, it could be where the disturbance limits are indicated. I actually have a drawing where I highlighted what could be. This is for lot four.
Do you suggest to have the limits of disturbance and the conservation easement run together?
Right, kind of in, uh, yep, in parallel, and that would, that would preserve, it's hard to see from here, and I wonder if I could just show them what I think, okay?
See, this is why we're still doing online meetings, we can share it, we can share it right now.
So on the southern portion of this lot, the area outlined in yellow, that's the conservation easement area, but it, it terminates at the lot line, or the area where the road right away is, um, if you wanted to consider extended easement area, you could do, what is outlined in green, and then there, there's existing mature vegetation there that could be preserved to block the view of that one.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Oak Concourse, where it goes through there, I mean, that's just a paper road right there, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's nothing there.
It's all wooden.
Yeah.
Do you know how your client would feel about moving the conservation easement? I guess you'll ask me.
What was that?
Do you know how your client would feel, would that be to move the conservation easement? Then I think we should move the conservation easement.
Move the conservation easement.
All right, anything else we- Yes, no, trying to, Jonathan, I know, I know you guys are gonna look at the next submittals that come in, how long do you think it's gonna take for you to update the ARB forms and all the stuff that you've been asked for? Well, we still gotta have a public hearing, that's why I'm asking, 'cause I was thinking, we do a public hearing for August fourth, but you would have to have everything in by twenty-third? Hold on, everybody's looking at calendars.
It has to be two weeks prior to the week, June first.
The trouble, the, the trouble with that though, Mr. Chairman, is that, um, whether or not you consider the two weeks, which is sufficient for the consultants to review that, whether that's also consistent, if it's put up on the website, um, then the public would have it for two weeks, which is satisfactory. But if it's not put up until a few days before, that, that'll be a problem, so it'd have to be posted, uh, once it's filed.
The eighteenth would cover, cover us there.
Excuse me?
August eighteenth?
For the public hearing.
Yes.
The public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing on the eighteenth. Okay. So that gives you a little bit more, not much, but- Right, and I guess worse, worse, we'd have to open public hearing if- All right, so I'll make a motion to off, uh, to schedule a public hearing for this application on August eighteenth?
Seconded.
Seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's it, right, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
For me, anyway. I think that's all we have.
And you're, you're going with what you need, I think you need to get to us, right? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, back to Feldman, Southfield Falls, ARB. Uh, ARB reviewer proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling, said property located seventy-seven Southfield Falls, known as Village of Woodbury, tax map is section two-five-five, block four, lot two. It's incorrect that there's a public hearing, the public hearing had been opened and closed on this application already, so we're here to discuss the final tweet. Just give us a second to move papers. Thank you, sir. Actually, I think it, just you draw on this one, all right, Jonathan?
Uh, excuse me, what was it?
I think it's just you, it's just you for this report. Seventy-seven.
Okay, um, you have a memo dated June thirtieth from NBV. We've just, still had mostly technical issues to be settled. On sheet A five, there's still a note that states windows to be selected by other, and, uh, we need something more specific, and, uh, I had referenced, uh, common four D further on in the memo, where he discussed the, uh, the reflective windows and Ridge Preservation Standards. On the site plan, on S one, you're showing now, you know, the extra driveway area that you are filling in, so that there's a driveway that leads up to the new garage door, and we wondered whether you still need all the old paving, or whether you might be removing, might be willing to remove, or planning to remove some of the old paving, or do you want to keep all of the old and add new? Yeah, 'cause I, I, 'cause our, our suggestion would be, is when you, when you add in the new driveway area to the right that lines up with the new garage door, the area in front of the old garage door, you could remove some of that paving and landscape there. No, you want to keep it all. Okay, well, that would, that is allowable, as long as you, you don't go over your, uh, coverage limit, I don't think you will. But, uh, then, uh, 'cause your lot coverage requirement is thirty-five percent, and you're at seventeen point eight, but you need to update that figure to show the new paving, so it, 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 it should be higher than seventeen point eight now with the new paving. And also the building height, you just say less than thirty-five feet, you need to show exactly what the proposed building height is in feet, not just that it's under the- Okay, but if you could put that in the chart on the, uh, on S one. Yeah. Okay, understood. And then, uh, and then once again, the board should discuss the natural material issue and the classic, uh, green color, uh, and, and, and whether, and whether that works. This is an addition, uh, so typically you've treated matching the colors on the main house from the addition differently, but I don't think you had actually settled on a decision at the last meeting. And then, I believe you do have the, enough information to determine excessive dissimilarity or, or similarity standard on sizes. Uh, he's given us photos, uh, and, um, uh, and, um, numbers on comparable homes in the neighborhood. So those are my comments from the June thirtieth memo.
Thank you. Questions for Jonathan?
I had a hard time hearing you, so you said that you're keeping the existing driveway-
Yes.
And expanding it to go in front of the new-
Yes.
Garage?
Yes.
Okay. And Jonathan, you said that we need the coverage percentage?
Yeah, because it, it was at seventeen point eight percent, and he didn't show a new percent number with the additional paving, but I, it's easily below the maximum, the maximum's thirty-five, I don't think he's getting anywhere close to that, it's probably up to-